This July 11, 2012, City Commission meeting will come to order, Madam City Manager.
Would you please stand and join me in the invocation? God of power and mercy, we give thanks for your goodness and your many blessings. As we prepare to conduct our final meeting before summer intercession, we seek your infinite wisdom and all deliberations. Help us to reflect and replenish for the work ahead. Finally, we ask a special blessing and prayer of healing for our friends and city family members who are recovering from illness or grieving the loss of loved ones. Please comfort them and give them the strength to endure. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Righty. Okay. And we had the invocation, had the pledge, any agenda modifications?
Mr. Mayor, we have two agenda modifications, and they are actually additions to tonight's agenda. The first one is item 5.04. It's a presentation to growth management members for the Growth Management Building Inspection Awards. The second one is 16.04, continuation of the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 12Z-22, which is a proposed amendment to the official zoning map.
Okay. It's there.
Those are the only two that I have.
Okay. We're then on, now announcements, where do we on?
We're on presentations.
Presentations, thank you. Well, Michelle Hartsfield, is she here? Michelle, don't step back there, come and join us. You did some good stuff. Okay. It is an honor that I present this proclamation on behalf of the City Commission and the entire city of Tallahassee for your valiant and selfless actions that led to the rescue of a family in need. And the proclamation reads as follows. On March, okay. On March 24, 2012, Michelle Hartsfield was traveling south on Orange Avenue. And whereas Michelle Hartsfield witnesses sports car lose control, jumped the median, and hit two vehicles, causing one to be badly damaged and catch fire. And whereas Michelle Hartsfield pulled over, called 911, checked on the passengers of the involved vehicles. And whereas the passenger of the damaged vehicle exited and was in shock, the driver of the vehicle was trapped and a boy was buckled into a booster seat in the backseat. And whereas the boy was crying, and Mrs. Hartsfield tried to calm him, telling him he should get out, get him out of, telling him she would get him out of the car. However, the back doors would not open. Mrs. Hartsfield went back to the passenger front seat. At the time, the boy had unbuckled his seatbelt and crawled to the front seat. Whereas Mrs. Hartsfield escorted the boy away from the car and told him to go away from, from the car, she then returned to the car to see if another child was in the car. When Mrs. Hartsfield returned to the car, it had, it had filled with smoke. By now, other witnesses were trying to get the driver out of the car. And whereas the driver was extricated and moved away from the vehicle, the fire department arrived, treated the injuries, and put the fire out. Now therefore, I, John R. Marsh III, on behalf of all the citizens of Tallahassee do hereby recognize Michelle Hartsfield for her heroic and selfless actions, and invite all citizens to join me in thanking Michelle Hartsfield. Thank you so much.
Just one thing I wanted to say is that I feel a little embarrassed being recognized for something that felt so natural, that I imagine would be just a natural instinct. But, and I would hope someone would do the same for me or my family. But I'm, I am proud to have helped, and I would like to accept this award, but I do so on the behalf of the three or four other men who were also there with me helping the family. And their, their information was not able to be found, and therefore they could not be here to be recognized. So I thank you in their honor as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just real quickly, I got a call from Uncle Bert, Bert Hartsfield. He wanted to let you know that he was unable to make it. I guess he's late coming back. And any other family Hartsfield members that weren't here to congratulate you and thank you for your bravery.
Are you remember that big Hartsfield clan? Okay. Will Maurice Majak please join me at the podium? You're on. Yes. That's what they tell me on the piece of paper.
I gotta be over there.
Mr. Mayor, I think he's, yeah, I think he's gonna come over here and give you a brief presentation. Maurice, come on over. Let me for a second give him some accolades that he won't give himself. This is Maurice Majak, and he came to us after a number of careers other places. He was a diamond in the rough. He was only with the Tallahassee Fire Department six years. However, as you know, every organization is just built on the foundation laid by those before us. And no one really took the time in the fire department, I guess, so busy to collect all of that history and all of that foundation, and really put together the chronology of our family, where we started and where we are today, until Maurice joined us, who was not even a part of that family for much of that history. So he's presented you today with some books that he's, he took on his own time, his own effort, his own money, to put together a history of the Tallahassee Fire Department. And I want to give him an opportunity to explain that to you and show you some of the samples of those books. So thank you, Maurice. I know we also have some retired members and some current members of the fire department. If you guys would stand up so you can be recognized as foundation layers, thank you very much. And now Maurice.
Thank you, Chief. Now everybody can see. Before I start, I'd like to thank a couple people for all their input on this book, one being Don Lanham, who had, had done a lot of research on the fire department and was willing to share that with me. And especially to Assistant Chief Ridgeway Coe, who's retired, and his wife Dot. What Ridgeway didn't know about the fire department, Dot knew. So, thank you. As you can see from the cover here, it kinda along the bottom takes us through the years of the fire department, where when we went from the horse and buggy to motorized. On, on the horse and buggy there is Chief Thomas P. Coe, Pinkney Coe, along with Tom and Jerry, the horses. Yeah, that's what's their names. And then in the middle is our first fire truck that we got on April 1st, 1916. Then we progressed to the tailboard trucks because the cabs weren't big enough to ride everybody inside. Picture on top is one of our Truck One at Fire Station One down the street. And the reason it's in the picture is because it's the only truck that we still have a bell on. The book is divided into several different areas, the first being fires and other events. In 1896, there was a bell installed in the cupola of the marketplace, which was located on the southeast corner of Jefferson and Adams Street. The bell was for ringing out fires. They had the city divided up into fire districts, not for taxation, but for fire purposes. And if, if a fire was in District 25, for example, there would be two long rings on the bell, and then four, five short rings, District 25. Everybody would know where the fire was. In 1937, when we moved out of that building up to 109 South Adams, the bell was donated to Emmanuel Baptist Church. When they moved from the area of the Civic Center up, up Mahan, they took the bell with them. Long-term goal is hopefully, maybe we'll get the bell back. We'll see. That's our two-story firehouse there in the center, which was located right where City Hall is today. That was back in the early 1900s, 1902 is when we were formally started. In 1930, we went from the Tallahassee Volunteer Fire Company to the Tallahassee Fire Department. We had six paid people full-time and six reservists who got paid when they responded to a fire or when they went to a drill. Of the six reservists, Lou and Our Spear was one of them. November 30th, 1930, warehouse fire down by the railroad station. Two warehouses on fire. Lou and Our Spear went in to open the doors for the rest of the firefighter. There was an explosion while he was inside by the front door trying to get it up. He was badly burned, and he passed away the next day. This fact was basically unknown, and through research for the book, it's been brought to the forefront. I was over at the state Capitol on their wall of honor for fallen firefighters. He's not on the wall. We sent all our documentation to the State Fire College. They came back and said, "We have never had a fire death so well documented. He will go on the wall this October, 2012." When we moved from the fire station that was at southeast corner of Adams and Jefferson, we, we went to where the Doubletree is, that's in the picture there. And you'll notice way up on the corner, that's Adams and Park, and that's where City Hall was up on the corner there. We used to get our new trucks, they came in by railroad, and they would be driven off and set, put in a warehouse down around the railroad station, so that the public could come in and see the new trucks, because there wasn't enough room in the station. So, that's Charles Bird on the left there, Malcolm Yancey, City Manager in the center, and Chief Earl Levy on the right. There's a good picture, 1958, when it snowed. We made a snowman in front of Station Two. What I learned after this picture is that Assistant City Manager Tom Coe helped make that snowman. This picture is interesting, because it, not of the fire in 1960, but if you'll see, everybody in there is either smoking or lighting a cigarette. I didn't know it at the time, but they didn't have the breathing apparatus back then, so when they came out, they'd take two or three drags on the cigarette, and it would clear their lungs. Who knew?
I didn't.
One of our bigger fires was Mendelson Department Store Fire in 1967, December 1st. This picture is in there because you can see exactly where Mendelson's was. The Walker Library is down in the lower-left corner, and up in the center is the Capitol. So now we know exactly where the Mendelson Building was. Westcott Building, fire in 1969. We had two firefighters injured on that, that fire. Ironically, after the fire, they sprinkled the attic. It was up in the attic on the fourth floor, they sprinkled it after the fire, but that's the only portion of the building they put sprinklers in. Ernest L. Adams was our first Afro-American firefighter. He did 25 years and retired as a deputy chief from the department. We saved six of the 15 buildings. We did real well, because we had no water pressure out there. So, six were saved. No book is complete without Horace Culpepper in it. He would respond to all accidents, monitor his CB radio, and was very, very helpful. He had the first jaws of life, and he would let us use them when, when we got there, or when he got there, whoever got there first. Our first female fire was Mary, firefighter was Mary Gardner. Wendy Wilson was our longest-serving firefighter, all online, 28 years. Chief Andrea Jones was the first who did all her time on the department and retired from the department. Georgia Bell Dixon Fire, burnt twice, one in 1975 and one in 1994. Both fires were on the second floor. The first fire, the firefighters got there, they, they put ladders up to the second floor and carried the ladies down. When it was all over with, the ladies asked the, the incident commander, the fire chief, if they could light the building on fire against, so the firefighters could carry them down. A lot of you may remember, may remember the crane rescue, where in 1997, 16 stories up in the air, five guys went up and lowered down the crane operator who had a heart attack or a stroke. I love this picture of the bowling alley fire, not that it caught fire, but all the wheels for this truck to operate properly have to be off the ground. And if you look real close, you'll see the wheels are off the ground. This is our last one, Sheriff, Florida Sheriff's Association Fire, building burnt to the ground. It, it was very visible for a long way. Cause was undetermined. And we do have an honor guard, which we're very proud of, so we included them in the book. They belong there, they've been around since 1997, and do a great deal of good for the department. And I'll add also for the city, because when they're there, they're representing all of us. We have one short club here, a section of the book on the 40-plus year club. Chief Earl Levy did 51 years.
Wow.
Joe Vincent did 50 years to the day.
Great.
Born in 1900, joined the department in 1925, and retired in 75. Jay, John B. Harvey, 49 and a half years. Ridgeway Coe, over 42 years. And Tommy Roberts, Tommy E. Roberts, over 40 years. Our fire chiefs, C.A. Spencer was the first, he came down here to install the wooden waterworks, all the water mains, and liked the fire department so well, he moved over, took a job a few, few years later and left the area. L.M. Lively was the next fire chief for one month, because the council was supposed to appoint a fire chief. He was elected by the members. He was replaced by Chief John Hamlin till 1912, he served from '05 to '12. And then Thomas Pinkney Coe came in and served 34 years as a fire chief, retired April 30th, 1940. He then served another three years as a city fire inspector. Chief Earl Levy, 51 years on the department. Then came Chief Regans. And then, when he left, interim chief Herb Roberts took over for a few months before Chief Quillen came. And after Chief Quillen, interim chief Steve Anderson was our fire chief for a few months till we got our fire chief right now, Chief Dick, and she's doing a great job. There's two other sections of the book, which you can read in there. One is on stations and personnel, and the other's on all the fire memorials that are around the city and county. Thank you so much for letting me.
That was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. We want to thank you very much. Want to thank all our firefighters, of course, those that are not here, and those that are here with us today for, you know, the wonderful job you do for this community. Without you, we wouldn't, we really wouldn't be the kind of community we are. So, thank you so much. That is a great book. I want to sit down, have a chance to sit down over the break, and go through it thoroughly, okay? Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Commissioner? Just a quick comment. Obviously, the firefighters serve an amazing purpose for us and protect so many of us on a regular basis, but they also serve our community in a lot of different ways. And I want to point out that they're going to be demonstrating their stair climbing skills. The, it's the end of September, beginning of October, I've forgotten the date. End of September, there's a stair climb. It's a competition. I know the police department has been challenged, there's other people, they'll be climbing up as fast as they can in full gear, the condo immediately behind the Brogan. So I would urge everyone to come out and watch our firefighters in action, but not in a threatening way.
All right, thank you very much. We'll be there, somebody will be there for sure. All right. Brent Hartsfield with Louis Garcia, CEO of Big Brothers and Sisters, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Big Ben. Members of the Board of Directors, Mr. Delatory Hollinger, and the 212, 2012 National Big Brother of the Year, Mr. Brent Hartsfield, please join me at the podium. Brent, we at the City of Tallahassee are truly proud of the commitment that you've made to mentoring. We congratulate you on your recent accolade, and recognize the prestige that comes from garnering statewide and national recognition for your diligence. Undoubtedly, your commitment has made a major impact on this young man's life. Where's the young man? And I would be remiss if I didn't say that your contributions and recognitions are also a testament to the great community that we have here in Tallahassee. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Big Ben has been doing stellar work in this community for over 40 years now, and I'd like to take the opportunity to convey my appreciation to CEO Louis Garcia, for his local leadership, and for that leadership earning him a position on the national level with Big Brothers, Big Sisters of, of America's National Leadership Conference. Again, congratulations. Congratulations for your efforts on behalf of Delatory and others. Thank you so very much, sir.
We get the Big Brother of the Year is really one of the greatest honors of my life, and being recognized by the City of Tallahassee today is also a great honor. I've lived in Tallahassee all of my life, except for four years. I know Commissioner Musson, who also grew up in Tallahassee, I know his family, he knows my brother, so longstanding here in Tallahassee is indeed is a great honor for me. I really love Big Brothers, Big Sisters. It's good for the kids, obviously, it's good for the mentors, and it's also really good for the City of Tallahassee. I've been Delatory Hollinger's big brother now for almost seven years. I think our anniversary is actually in November, right? First time we met. When I first met Delatory those seven years ago, he was very shy, lacking self-confidence, would hardly even talk to me. Now, thanks to the miracles that Big Brothers, Big Sisters can work, he's an outstanding young man. He's 18 now, self-assured, excellent speaker, so he's become just a very outstanding young man. So he was transformed from this kid who was struggling with his grades when I first met him, when he was 12, to actually becoming a very good student, so much so that he graduated from high school eight months early. So that's a great accomplishment. Now, on top of that, as you well know, he is a candidate for the City Commission to replace Commissioner Musson when he retires. That's an outstanding accomplishment too, to have the courage and the talent to get out there and make campaign speeches, to develop his issues, and how he feels about things that are important to Tallahassee. So I'm very proud of Delatory for what he's done, and I know I'd be very proud of him and what he's going to accomplish in the future, maybe as one of your commissioners. Being a big brother or a mentor has also been good for me. Over seven years, Delatory has become really one of my best friends, and we always tell each other we'll be friends forever, it's nothing to stop now he's 18. And helping kids has given me a chance to get outside my smaller life and become part of somebody else's life. That's good for a person. It's given my life more meaning, more value, more significance to help a kid like Delatory. It's also given me what they call giver's glow. How's that for a catchy title? University researchers actually studied volunteers who help kids, or volunteer, really, in other ways to help people. And they found some really interesting things, like it releases endorphins into your body just like exercise does. So if you're out there volunteering to help senior citizen, volunteering to help a kid, it gives you what they call giver's glow, and other researchers call it helper's high. So giver's glow and helper's high. I truly believe that Big Brothers, Big Sisters is also good for the City of Tallahassee. You know, it takes kids who may be struggling, who may end up being high school dropouts, whatever problems, produces fine young men and women like Delatory who are going to do good things in the future. So that's good for the city. And if the adults, the big brothers, the big sisters, the mentors, if they're happy, well, that's good for the city too. So I hope you can always find a little bit of money in your budget to help Big Brothers and Big Sisters. But again, thank you very much, it's a great honor.
I just want to thank the City Commission and the mayor for honoring Brent Hartsfield. We had the opportunity in June to travel to Washington DC and meet in the Oval Office with President Obama, and he congratulated Brent on his award. And I can honestly say that I would not be the person that I am today if it were not for the influence of Brent Hartsfield and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program. He has been my Big Brother of the Year for the past seven years, and I really, really thank the national organization for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You know, that's the kind of thing we like. You one of them Hartsfields too?
I was gonna say, I, I, second thought, related to the first Hartsfield.
Okay. Just, just curious. But this is the kind of thing we always like in the City of Tallahassee, and I want to congratulate Brent and Delatory for sticking together, and being a national big brother is really a truly an honor. So, thank you for being a part of our community. You know what? I didn't read the proclamation. I apologize. Come here. Do I, did we do this before? We didn't? Oh, you got the proclamation? Let me read the proclamation, please. I see it on this page as I turn. Whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters of America, the nation's largest donor and volunteer-supported mentoring network since 1904, has held its, has held itself accountable for children in its program to achieve measurable outcomes such as educational success, avoidance of risky behavior and higher aspirations, greater confidence and better relationships. Whereas Big Brothers and Sisters pairs local disadvantaged children, disadvantaged children with dedicated mentors to forge a one-to-one relationship built to trust and friendship that can blossom into future unlimited possibilities. And whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has served as a local mentor and tutor in the Leon County School System for over 20 years, and whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has, has been a big brother to Delatory Hollinger for seven years, and helped him graduate high school and achieve success. Whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has recently selected, was recently selected by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America as a 2012 National Big Brother of the Year, after being named a 2012 Florida Big Brother of the Year. And whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has been instrumental- it gives you what they call giver's glow, and other researchers call it helper's high. Giver's glow and helper's high. I truly believe that Big Brothers, Big Sisters is also good for the City of Tallahassee. You know, it takes kids who may be struggling, who may end up being high school dropouts, whatever problems, produces fine young men and women like Delatory who are going to do good things in the future. So that's good for the city. And if the adults, the Big Brothers, the Big Sisters, the mentors, if they're happy, well, that's good for the city, too. So I hope you can always find a little bit of money in your budget to help Big Brothers and Big Sisters. But again, thank you very much, it's a great honor.
I just want to thank the City Commission and the mayor for honoring Brent Hartsfield. We had the opportunity in June to travel to Washington, D.C., and meet in the Oval Office with President Obama, and he congratulated Brent on his award, and I can honestly say that I would not be the person that I am today if it were not for the influence of Brent Hartsfield and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program. He has been my Big Brother of the Year for the past seven years, and I really, really thank the National Organization for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, that's the kind of thing we like. You one of them Hartsfields, too?
I was going to say, I don't know. It's like, uh, my second guy is related to the first Hartsfield.
Okay, just curious. But this is the kind of thing we always like in the City of Tallahassee, and I want to congratulate Brent and Delatory for sticking together, and being a national Big Brother is really a truly an honor. So, thank you for being a part of our community. You know what? I didn't read the proclamation. I apologize. Come here. Do I, did we do this before? We didn't? Oh, you got the proclamation. Let me read the proclamation, please. I see it on this page as I turn. Whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters of America, the nation's largest donor and volunteer-supported mentoring network since 1904, has held itself accountable for children in its program to achieve measurable outcomes such as educational success, avoidance of risky behavior and higher aspirations, greater confidence and better relationships. Whereas Big Brothers and Sisters pairs local disadvantaged children with dedicated mentors to forge a one-to-one relationship built to trust and friendship that can blossom into future unlimited possibilities. And whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has served as a local mentor and tutor in the Leon County School System for over twenty years, and whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has been a Big Brother to Delatory Hollinger for seven years and helped him graduate high school and achieve success, whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has recently selected, was recently selected by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America as a 2012 National Big Brother of the Year after being named a 2012 Florida Big Brother of the Year, and whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield has been instrumental as a Big Brother in helping Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Big Ben prove, provide, or rather, a child facing adversity with caring adult mentor. And whereas Mr. Brent Hartsfield held himself accountable to Delatory Hollinger, achieving higher aspirations, greater confidence and better relationships, now therefore I, John R. Marsh III, by the power of vested me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize and honor Mr. Brent Hartsfield as a 2012 National Big Brother of the Year. I needed to read that. Maybe the last one was the Florida Big Brothers. Was he in for that? No? Okay. Thought I remembered that, but I didn't. Okay. Okay. Huh? Oh, okay, I knew it was something. It was familiar. Okay, well, Karen Jumminville, Director of the City's Growth Management Department, along with Glenn Dodson, Kenny Locke, Luther Gunter, Maria Rodriguez, please join me at the table, at the podium, rather. City of Tallahassee employees of Growth Management's Building Inspection Division were nominated in four out of five awards, four, four out of five awards during the Building Officials' Association of Florida State Convention in Orlando, and received two of the state awards for contributions to the Building Officials' Association of America and this community. Glenn Dodson, our Deputy Building Official in the Growth Management Department, was honored by his peers as the Building Official of the Year, and was also elected to the Board of Directors of the International Code Council Region Nine. Kenny Locke, our Chief Mechanical Inspector in the Growth Management Department, was honored by his peers as the Member of the Year, and was also elected to the position of Treasurer of our state association. City employees Luther Gunter and Maria Rodriguez were also recipients of our Local Chapter Awards as Plans Examiner of the Year and Meritorious Service Award winners. We are all very proud of these four highly-trained individuals who work daily for our city and the community to ensure new and existing buildings are safe for the occupants and remain code compliant. This is just another example of how the City of Tallahassee is setting the example in professional leadership and building code administration throughout our industry. Please join me in congratulating all of these award winners for their outstanding work they're doing for the City of Tallahassee and our community. Thank you. And I actually have each one of the awards. Maria Rodriguez, this award presented in recognition of all the hard work and dedication you have shown to this chapter. Your efforts to support this chapter are a shining example to everyone. Maria, thank you so much for that. Luther Gunter, this award is presented in recognition of your dedication to the citizens and businesses of the community. Your leadership and commitment to excellence is a shining example to all in our industry. Thank you so very much. Glenn Dodson, Building Official of the Year. Wow. In recognition of outstanding service to your community and your profession, Building Officials' Association of Florida, 2012. Congratulations, that's really great. And Kenneth, Kenny Locke, in recognition of outstanding service to your community and your profession, Building Officials' Association of Florida, 2012. Thank you very much for your service, sir. Thank you. Let's give them all a big round of applause. I'll only just add, this is just an example of outstanding employees that we have working at City Home. There are many, many more, and they really enjoy what they're doing, and they really strive to be the best, and as you can see, they are. Thank you very much again. All right, Madam City Manager, where are we?
We are on number eight, Citizen Input on Agenda Items.
Any speakers? Citizen input?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Delatory Hollinger.
Delatory Hollinger.
And he'll be followed by Anna Villar.
All right. Delatory.
Where'd you go?
Where'd you go? Okay, go to the next one.
And then we'll move to Delatory Hollinger. Each of them are speaking, I believe, on item thirteen oh one.
Thirteen oh one.
If you will give your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Anna Villar. I'm the Executive Director of United Partners for Human Services at 2477 Tim Gamble Place. To begin, let me say that UPHS and the Community Human Service Agencies funded through the CHSP process greatly appreciate your support. We could not accomplish what we do without your support. I would also like to thank Assistant City Manager Tom Ko for the courtesy call I got on Friday. I'm here to speak to item thirteen oh one, Proposed Amendments to the Community Human Service Partnership Joint Planning Board Bylaws. On May thirtieth, I was unanimously appointed as an individual to the JPP. At the same meeting, the JPP voted to amend their bylaws to make the Executive Director of UPHS the permanent seat on the JPP. Now, a recommendation to reduce JPP membership from seven to six, eliminating the UPHS seat, is being brought before you. I urge you, please do not exclude Community Human Services from the partnership. Community Human Service Agencies greatly appreciate the financial support provided by the city, the county, and the United Way through the CHSP process. Community Human Service Agencies also bring private, state, and federal dollars to the table, allowing us to provide this community with a continuum of quality services ranging from prenatal care to grief counseling. That continuum would not be possible without all of those dollars. Because our members provide such a broad spectrum of services to the citizens of our community, UPHS is in a unique position to represent the Community Human Service Agencies, including those agencies not funded by United Way. UPHS does not receive any CHSP funding. UPHS does not participate in the CHSP application process. I do not see the CHSP applications. I do not attend the site visits or presentations. I do not make agency funding recommendations. The JPP bylaws contain the following specification: Nothing in this document shall infringe upon the existing rights of the three parties. This particular clause was included to protect the autonomy of each funding partner, recognizing that each partner has to adhere to its respective governing body. We do not understand what is gained by excluding Community Human Services from the Community Human Service Partnership process. We are not aware of any best practice model which excludes those delivering services from the process. CHSP is a collaboration and a successful one, bringing together our citizens, local government, the United Way, public and private dollars, and our Community Human Service Agencies. We do not understand how being exclusive is better than being inclusive. Please do not exclude Community Human Services from the partnership. UPHS is committed to maintaining a voice and a seat on the JPP. As a voice for human services in our community, we deserve it. Please follow the JPP recommendation to amend the JPP bylaws and to make UPHS the permanent seven seat on the JPP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Delatory Hollinger.
Mr. Hollinger.
Commissioners, I'm here to talk about the same thing.
You, give us your name and address. We all know you, but Delatory, we got a record of you.
I'm Delatory Hollinger, five zero one Alpha Avenue, and I'm here to speak about the Community Human Services. And there are two changes proposed for the Joint Planning Board. Change one creates unanimous vote versus the existing majority vote, and the consent vote creates even more stalemate and allows one vote to block progress. And the second change eliminates the seven seat on the JPP, which was filled by majority vote last meeting, appointing CEO of United Partners for Human Services, who represents almost one hundred agencies that care for our community, one of them being Big Brothers, Big Sisters. This proposal was initiated by unnecessary politics and eliminates the only voice for the community, clients, and agencies that receive CHSP funding benefits. Please keep the voting seat intact, as majority voted last meeting and has existed for ten years. Thank you. Do not, please don't change the bylaws.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No other speakers.
Okay.
We're on consent, Mr. Mayor.
We're on consent. Any items pulled from consent?
Move consent.
All in favor of the motion to move consent, please say aye.
Aye.
It's move.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment, because I polled an agenda item, one of the items last week. I had a conversation with Barbara Walker, and one of the reasons why I fully support this, this is for the Planning Commission, extremely bright, very well-prepared, and I'm extremely pleased that we have somebody of that caliber willing to serve, because that's our biggest problem, and so if in any way I made a statement that offended anyone, my apologies, but she will be spectacular on the Planning Commission.
Well, I'm glad you took an opportunity to do that. We try and vet all of our important appointees and see whether or not they could do it, but it's always good that we can take an opportunity, and the Commissioners take an opportunity to talk to individual appointee to make sure that we're making the right decision. So, thanks. Thanks for doing that. All in favor of the motion to form consent? Did we vote it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
We're on introduction of ordinances, and the City Attorney will handle both of those.
Thank you, Madam Manager. American Ministers, we have just two ordinances for introduction this evening. Twelve point oh one is Introduction of Ordinance. Twelve oh twenty relates to the Tallahassee, City of Tallahassee's Compressed Natural Gas Vehicle Refueling Service Rate Schedule. The first and only public hearing on that will be, actually, on August twenty ninth. And then the second ordinance is a pension ordinance, twelve oh twenty nine, Proposed Amendments to the City Ordinance relating to inclusion of personal and sick leave in firefighters' retirement benefits. That comes out of the recent negotiations and contract, and will also be set for a public hearing on August twenty ninth.
All righty, next item.
The next item is item thirteen point oh one, which is a discussion, as you've already heard, of the Proposed Amendments to Community Human Service Partnership Joint Planning Board Bylaws, an appointment of City Board Representative. Commissioners, the Joint Planning Board was established as part of the Community Human Service Partnership and serves as an advisory committee to the City and County Commissions and the United Way Board of Directors as it relates to CHSP funding. This agenda item includes three recommended actions. However, at the recommendation of the target issue Commissioners, we're only going to address two of them today, and you'll hear the details about those. One is to amend the bylaws so that the Joint Planning Board appointees are not persons directly involved in the administration of the CHSP process, and two, to approve the appointment of Mr. James Apthorpe as the city's, city appointee to the board. Michael Parker is here, and both target issue Commissioners may have some input on this item.
You want him to go first? You want to go first? Sit down, Mayor.
If I could make a couple comments. All right, thank you, and I want to acknowledge the speakers, Ms. Villar, particularly who came and spoke on this item. As many of you all know, the Joint Planning Board currently consists of representatives, two from the city, two from the county, two seats at the United Way, although only one has been appointed, and a representative that we have named, Anna Villar in this case, from the United Partnership for Human Services. The dispute over the, the composition of the JPP has kind of been ongoing for a number of years, actually. One of the partners has expressed a pretty deep concern about the partnership consisting of any one other than the three funding partners. To put into perspective, the JPP, although not a funding organization, provides feedback and guidance and policy suggestions for the manner in which the CHSP funds will be allocated. The partnership has mainly of late been tasked with the role of reviewing and making some recommendations from growing out of the needs assessment that was conducted almost two years ago now. And I'm embarrassed to say that we've had those recommendations for a while and have had those recommendations vetted by Human Services Agency Partners as well as community volunteers, and they've come forward with some pretty thorough recommendations about how the process can be changed, enhanced, to better reflect, I think, the needs of the community, the needs of the service providers, as well as those on the service delivery end. But we have not been able to take any action on those, on those recommendations, in part because one of our partner agencies maintains that the United Partnership position has not been approved by their board. And given the fact that this has been such a longstanding issue for us, and the fact that we'd like to move forward in a spirit of collaboration, a number, I certainly feel, having been deeply involved on the path of this commission, that we've got to move beyond the issue of represent, voting representation on the JPP, to the real issues that the Joint Planning Board exists to address. And if the only stumbling block in the way of getting there is one of equal and fair representation by each of the three funding partners, this recommended agenda item is what's now before us. I did meet with a number of Human Service Agency Representatives, and they, too, certainly want to maintain a voice within the, within the partnership. What I would suggest that this commission consider is altering the recommendation just slightly, and appoint a, by ex officio, membership, an individual who represents the Human Services Agency on this board as a non-voting member, and that the three partners, the city, county, and the United Way, continue to be the voting membership of the Joint Planning Board. This, I think, accommodation will offer an opportunity for those agencies to have a voice, to be heard, to weigh in on every single item. And I would go further to suggest that any subcommittees that are created from the Joint Planning Board be required to have representation from the agencies on them. To give you an example of how, hopefully, non-controversial this change is, is that all of the recommendations that have come to us as a part of this needs assessment study consisted of two separate committees, which were composed of agency representatives and community volunteers. And I think the recommendations that we got back are very rich, and they're made stronger because of that representation. And even though those folks who compose those committees will not have a vote in what recommendations go forward, we will be reacting exclusively from the recommendations that they have brought forward for the funding partners to consider. The truth is, is that the United Way is the majority funder of human services in this community, more than the city and more than the county, and that if we're going to move forward, I think, in a spirit of collaboration and partnership, not one funding partner should veto the other. And in order to accomplish that, the suggestion that we move to a consensus basically says that the three funding partners, the representatives of those agencies would need to, or those funders, would need to agree before any recommendation could go forward. I've got confidence that this is a sound way of moving forward, simply because we all have a very, very clear mission, and I think a shared value set of trying to move the human services in this community in a forward direction, and that it just, you know, and my experience with working with this group doesn't seem to make a whole bunch of sense for us to hold up and even possibly unravel award-winning partnership funding program for the sake of who gets to vote and who doesn't. I think ultimately, we're all going to have the best interests of the community at heart, and I think that's what's most important here. And that's notwithstanding the, the strong voice and representation that the partners have had at the table to this point. I don't anticipate going forward that any of that will be diminished. My hope is that if this change allows us now to get beyond this sickening debate over a number of years of partnership, and who gets to vote and who doesn't get to vote, I'm all for moving us forward to a place where we can start to make some real decisions, solve some real community problems, and hopefully, ultimately, move more resources into, into the human services funding sector. So those are the recommended changes that, that I would make and hope that this commission will move to adopt, is that the agencies will have an ex officio, non-voting position on the board, which again entitles them to weighing in on all issues, but it does not entitle that representative to a vote, in that we move to a consensus form of voting, and that we add into the item, add into the bylaws, that any subcommittees of the board that are created must include that are created must include agency representation on those committees. And I'd make that in the form of...
I'll second that for discussion. I do have a question, though. The, the representative, ex officio representative from the, the agencies, how will that person be determined?
Right now, that agency individual would be, after talking with Michael today, would be approved by the board.
Okay.
So the three funding partners would approve that individual moving into that seat.
Okay. I, much like you, serving on the Health and Human Services Target Issue Committee, we have been waiting. You have seen some of the results, we have not. And so whatever we can do to move this along, I think probably as a commission, we're supportive of that, so I wholeheartedly support that.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to express my appreciation to you for your leadership and bringing this forward, and I think that, you know, and it sounds like a spirit of compromise to kind of get this, you know, on down the road, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Commissioner Gillum, can you advise whether, what the county did on this? Did they take action on this yesterday?
Yeah, the county wants to mirror our proposal since we've sort of been taking the lead in trying to bring this issue to conclusion. There is a Joint Planning Board orientation for new members coming up later this month. Our agenda item will then be forwarded both to the United Way and to the Leon County Board of Commissioners for their, for their action. So we would be taking the first step in this, in this direction. And then last, I just want to acknowledge that we have some of the best human service providers on this side of earth. They, in their due diligence, are the ones that created the United Partners for Human Services as a federation of organizations so that they could speak with a more united advocacy voice. And so they're giving, they're giving a lot by joining us in this, in this compromise. And, and I just, I think I could say pretty wholeheartedly that as a city representative to that board, that the issues of the agencies will never fall on deaf ears, because we are accountable to voters and we are accountable to you all as constituents of ours. And I think that the same is true at the county. And although the United Way has a different governing structure and a structure that doesn't force it to be as open as ours, I think that ultimately, they also have the goal of wanting to be a good representative of, of, of the agency. So Kelly Adi, who was part of the, of the, of the beginning, back when Buddy Strick was here and others, and starting the United Partners for Human Services, although no longer in the leadership of that group, has played a very, very key and pivotal role. And I also want to acknowledge Cheryl Phoenix, who's also here, is the incoming chairperson of the Board of Directors for the United Partners for Human Services. And Anna, to you for your continued service as the executive director of UPHS, you certainly have this commission's full support and embrace.
Okay, we have, I totally agree with you. Go ahead.
Well, I just have a question. Basically, I was, I'm relatively new to all these processes, and my only impression since I got here is what a masterful concept you've set up here as far as how to handle these awards and, and really interaction between the human service partners and, and the city government and other funders. I was reading, so I'm kind of fresh eyes, I guess you could say, and so when I was reading this, a couple of questions I am not clear about yet. Is the seventh seat going to still be the head of United Partners? Is that person still going to be automatically the seventh seat?
Not the, not any individual will be a representative. The criteria would be that you'd have to come from one of the funded agencies.
Okay, so you have to come from one of the funded agencies.
Not of the United Way, but of the human services.
No, the funded agencies. I got that, okay. The second thing is...
I'm sorry, I said that wrong. It's not just funded, it's qualified for funding, because everyone doesn't necessarily get funding.
Certified CHSP agency.
But certified, um, agency.
All right, so you've got some criteria there, but it's still coming from, from the human services part of the equation.
Absolutely.
Okay. And this board, what does this board actually do?
Yeah, good question. We've asked ourselves. The, which is, I'll, I'll just go directly to answering. The, the board is intended to be the oversight board of the, of the funding process, that is, an award-winning funding, funding process through our CHSP program. The board had fallen defunct for a number of years, and as issues began to creep up in that process and recommendations for changing that process came up, everyone was looking around trying to figure out, well, how do you do that? And so we went back to the documents, found that this board was supposed to exist, and frankly, due to the diligence of, of Kelly Adi, some of the folks through the Federation of Agencies, and Commissioner Katz, when he was here, began to pull partners back together and, and, and sort of recreate that board. My expectation is, is that after we've had an opportunity to digest the recommendations for changes to be made to the partnership and to the funding process, and some have already been implemented. For instance, and I'll be brief here, there wasn't a process for curing an agency whose application came in late. It was just a fatal flaw. So if you came in a couple of minutes late and we had that experience, your agency couldn't get, could not be qualified to review, for review and receive money. And that had an impact on a couple of agencies a couple of years ago, and staff were scrambling around saying, there's nothing we can do to assist you here. And so as a, as a part of this evaluation process, one of the recommendations that came back was sort of a layering of offenses and a timestamp not being one that could disqualify you from review, penalty, but not necessarily disqualification. And there are others, like multi-year funding, which we currently don't allow in the system, are some of the recommendations that we will vet through. And I think once the committee's vetted through those, we'll go back to a more relaxed system where we're doing sort of bi-annual check-ins, and it won't be the kind of regular, rigorous meeting schedule that we currently have proposed.
Thank you.
I, very little else I can add. I remember several years ago before, as a new, coming back after the Air Force and being in Air Force Community, I was appointed to the county's selection process. And it was not pretty. You know, it was not good, and it came up because you would get lobby from everybody. We want to get this, we want to get that. It was not a good process. And coming up with this process, it really has solved that problem very, very well. And so I congratulate all of you and commend all of you what you, what you do. We have a motion in a second, do we not?
We did.
Okay.
Yes, I just, for staff, if I could restate what I believe here so that we're clear is what your, what's been, your proposing commissioner is, is that you would make the changes to the bylaws that restrict the, the second, the membership from being someone that's actively involved in managing the program, the appointment of Mr. Apthorpe...
Apthorpe.
Apthorpe, excuse me, as the city's member, and then the changes that you just mentioned, amending the bylaws so that there were six voting members, which are the funding partners and the seventh ex officio position, and then that would be by, the process would be, approval process would be through consensus, and then the, any appointment, language appointment in subcommittees would include representation from the agency.
That's right.
Okay.
Got it. Commissioner?
How long is the term that this person has, Mr. Apthorpe or whoever else?
What's the term of...
Ex officio member.
The ex officio, that term hasn't been established.
No, I don't mean that, the one that we're appointing tonight.
Let me look at the bylaws and I'll get right back.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that information for you. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item 13.02, Discussion of Request for Assistance to Magnolia Acres. Commissioners, this agenda item is requesting that the city commission consider approval of a settlement agreement with Lutheran Social Services, which would provide for the transfer of Magnolia Acres Affordable Housing Development to the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. This agreement is being recommended primarily to assist the BBHC, which faces potential sanctions from federal and state granting agencies if they don't assume operation of the Magnolia Acres project. Michael Parker is here to answer any questions you might have on this item, and I know that all of you have been briefed on it.
Yes, all of us have been briefed on it and gotten several documents related to it. It is a very complicated and difficult issue, but something that we're going to have to make a decision about. And if anybody's got any comments at this point, I'd be glad to take them. Commissioner Miller?
The only comments that I have are, what do we, what are we going to do to avoid a situation like this in the future? One, I had, my major concern over this was that the position that it put the Big Ben Homeless Coalition in, and basically, when they are the vehicle for all of these, these funding transactions, then it seems to me that they become liable for anything that happens to anybody involved. And the actions of one agency have such an ability to impact the futures of so many other agencies, and that, I had questions about that in particular. And I don't think there are any answers, actually.
Well, there aren't, other than obviously, that the oversight that is required when you are the entity that is responsible for subcontracting funding means that you have to have major overs, you have to pay attention and monitoring has to be in place. I think this is, as you know, such a complicated circumstance that has gone on for a number of years and started way back with different directors and different board members and so forth. One of the things that our staff has indicated that they are encouraged about, and others can come up and talk about this, is the fact that we feel like we do have strong leadership now and a commitment to, to get it right, quite frankly.
Commissioner Muskin?
Well, I'll move the item mayor, and then I had a couple of comments. The, you know, we, and kind of the CHSP discussion lends itself to this, we rely, to a large extent, on nonprofit entities to kind of help us do things in the community that need to be done. And, and this is one of them, and I, I think, you know, kind of by the law of averages, and particularly given the economy that we are dealing with, stuff like this is going to happen sometimes. So, so that part of it, I don't, you know, I think is, is, you know, very unfortunate, because what it really means here is that there's money that otherwise could be used for affordable housing that can't be now because it's being, you know, rather than loaned out again, it's being forgiven here. So, but I mean, some of that is sort of the nature of the beast. The, the piece of it, though, that we might, could do a little better job, as there was a disconnect here at some point where we, you know, gave this loan, thinking the money was going to be used for something, and it ended up being used for something else. And so, so I don't know about our internal procedures, or maybe that's something we need to look at here to see that that piece, you know, we're a little more careful in monitoring the money when we, we do something like that. But other than that, I'm, I'm not sure we have a lot of choice here tonight in terms of what to do, I think, to salvage what we have and protect the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. I think this is probably the way to go.
This is being put between the proverbial rock and the hard place, because no decision is good, and any decision would be bad. So it's just, that's just the circumstances that we have right now. What I would like to know, though, Michael, is this. Do we have, tell, tell us basically what did Lutheran Social Services did with the money, and was it, as far as you, concerned, was it good, was it bad, or was there, is there something else that we can do at this point to see what happened?
Well, I, in terms of the proposal you have for you, as you mentioned, is to, primarily to help the Big Ben Homeless Coalition bring this to a conclusion. In terms of the use of the funds, we can account for what the use of the funds, we're with the loan program where we distribute them. I cannot, we can't speak with a great deal of authority about the total use of the funds. We were only part of the funding partners for this. In fact, we were not the largest funding partner in this. There were other partners that did the funding. So at this point in time, I, we, we don't have an accounting of where all the funds were used, only that when we provided the loan, we stopped making payments on the loan when it became apparent that the, that they weren't going to be able to meet the terms of the loan.
Okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I do find the whole situation to be unfortunate, in, in, in large part to the clientele that you all are charged with serving, but I want to acknowledge something else that's inherent in this, and that is, because the Big Ben Homeless Coalition is now taking this project on, I don't believe that there is any operating money that is accompanying the, these new units that they will now operate. This now becomes a new fixed cost for the Homeless Coalition, assuming that they will now add it to its inventory of work to be accomplished. And they just got a cut in their funding, and we are also proposing an additional, you know, $30,000 cut to human services in the budget. So I just want to acknowledge that we're now shifting this project and nine new units or whatever to the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. The federal funding for these services has decreased, and so somewhere in this, and I know we are returning $100 and whatever, $30,000 back to this fund, but somewhere in this, I think, you know, we owe it as part of being partners at, at this work, to circle back with the Big Ben Homeless Coalition to figure out what's the sustainable plan going forward. We all signed on to everything that's happened there at the Hope Community. It is a nationally recognized set of work, but we don't, I don't think we want to continue to add new liability here without some additional support to keep it, to keep them afloat. So I just want, I know there's nothing we can do in this vote to, to address this directly, but I want to raise that concern, because it, the problem is not, you know, it's not, it's not done.
It's not solved.
We've just shifted new burden. And I'm glad that the Big Ben Homeless Coalition is prepared to, to take it on, but next year in this funding process, they're going to look like a different agency in that it will have grown, and it will have grown in a way that's not consistent with anybody's strategic plan, so there's no money.
We'll address it. We have a motion in a second to accept Stan's recommendation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have one other question.
It passes unanimously. Go ahead.
That I wanted to ask about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Where's the money for that come from?
Now, it, it actually, from several sources. The corpus of it began a number of years ago when there was some property settlements. If you, if you remember the savings and loan crisis, and there was some property that was disposed of, and some of that came to local governments, and the corpus of that fund was built upon the receipts from sale of some of those properties that came back to the city. And then there are percentages of funds that are, come back to that based on track. When we move into a new development and there's a reimbursement of that develop, of the infrastructure costs, that will go into that as part of our utilities process, a small percentage of those proceeds go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so that's the basis, and then we've made loans, and as those loans are repaid, the funds go back into that source.
My next question is, is that money that's available that we could use to help to fund Big Ben Homeless Coalition to manage?
Well, it, it is completely within the commission's prerogative. However, there is a policy that the commission adopted, and you would need to address that if you're going to do that, that the monies were primarily going to be used for, for loans and grants, for physical improvements, for, because the idea was, it was initially intended to be a revolving loan fund. So, but it is your funds, it is controlled by the city, so at some future date, you wanted to revisit that policy, it would be your prerogative.
Commissioner Gillum?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Miller going down that line of thought. There, there, there's a remaining loan balance of $123,000 to be returned to the Housing Trust Fund, bringing that total back to 1.3 million, bringing the total to 1.3 million. I don't by any means want to, I think, totally, completely throw our policy out the window, but I think, given the amount of money put in this project, the unplanned nature of, of this property transfer and new responsibility to Homeless Coalition, that you all should really sit down to figure out what does the next operating years of, of funding for that looks like, because the other thing is, is they're about to get new allocations in the mail, I think, I don't believe they've gotten them yet, Commissioners, for the, their, this year's allocations of, of funding from the...
Recommendations, though, they have not been released yet.
Recommendations have been released for, for new funding. But I would imagine this was a part of the proposal when they went before their panel for funding.
No, no, sir.
Probably not. And so this, again, it'll be a new expense, and that, that's just one place that I would flag for us to maybe come back and look at.
If, if we could...
Commissioner Ziffer?
And, and keeping in mind, the CHSP process was $147,000 less this year than there is last year. than there is last year, so we know in all likelihood, even if they were to, let's say, score the same as they did last year, they'd probably have a percentage decrease. If, perhaps, because I'm assuming that since we've passed this, hopefully will happen rather rapidly, they're going to be taking over those nine existing units very soon. So, that means they're going to have issues, I would say, right around the corner. So, perhaps, you could get with the Big Bend Homeless Coalition, sit down and determine in calendar year 13 what they anticipate based upon taking over those nine, and then also the completion is on the other nine, so that we can at least get that...
There's no completion.
No. I'm sorry. But hopefully at some point, but to get those numbers in front of us?
Yeah.
So that we can make that determination.
We can work with the coalition and come up with a, what they think would be their operating shortfall.
Yeah.
Okay. We're on the next item.
The next item is 13.03, Discussion of Resolution to Create a Joint City-County Bicycle Work Group and Update on the Bicycle Friendly Community Designation Application. And Commissioners, currently neither the city nor the county has a formal working group to review bicycle-related improvements or projects, although members of various local cycling groups and citizens continue to express their desire for greater involvement in local transportation planning decisions. Therefore, this item outlines a process to incorporate greater citizen involvement in a bicycle-related facility planning. Also included is an update on current and future bicycle-related projects and initiatives as related to the city's goal to achieve a Silver Bicycle Friendly Community Designation. And Cherie is here to make a basic presentation to you, if you would like to have one, or to answer any questions that you might have.
Motion.
I'll move it, Mayor.
Second. All in favor of the motion? You want to comment?
Just very briefly, the, I mean, this has been kind of a cooperative effort to try and solidify the form of this bike committee, and what, is it going to stay in place? How's it going to work? Who's going to, staff going to work with it? So, I think this is a good solution to have the planning staff kind of help coordinate this. It's a, a little more formalized group. It is not the one thing that these guys, the bike people, really want, which is a dedicated employee, and it's been my job to tell them, nah, probably not going to happen. So, but I think there is a lot of positive that can come out of this, and if we could get to the Silver designation, it would be a really great thing for Tallahassee. So, I appreciate the staff's work in getting us to this point.
All right. We got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, unanimously, next item.
We have our target issue updates, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time, and I believe we have two listed, one, long-range planning, Commissioner Muskin, and the other, environmental and energy resources, Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Muskin.
All right, well, I'm giving the long-range planning, and I'm looking at this and thinking I already gave this at the last meeting. So, because we talked about the semi-trunks and residential areas, so I think that piece has been given, so forget that. But we met again today, and the, this is the issue of the stretch of Appalachia Parkway in front of the Capitol that I never knew until today, is called the, what, memorable mile? The memorable mile of Florida. And if you recall, there has been, or at least we've heard on the long-range planning, some citizens' complaints of people, property owners, had gone in, kind of whacked the trees there along the parkway. The whole level of maintenance is a little bit lacking on DOT's part in what's really one of the major thoroughfares, you know, of the city. And so, DOT has been working with us, they had a very elaborate plan that you guys will see in a few weeks here of improvements to, to this area in terms of new plannings that they will pay for. The rub being that they will then want us to maintain it. And so, we talked to them today about, well, you know, we just had a long discussion about this yesterday, and so, our direction, I think, was that, given the importance of this, we would like to do something maybe not quite on the scale of what they had originally thought. So, you guys will get an opportunity to see some of the visuals, I think, in August on that.
I don't think this is the right slide. I think this, the other one. Or is it, any more?
That was it.
For tonight.
That's it?
That was it.
Commissioner Miller.
ENE, well, there you go.
Joe, what's the problem?
We met on Monday, one of the numerous meetings that all of us have attended over the past couple of weeks, this was one of them. We met to discuss two things primarily, the state of the Tallahassee Green Print, which you have previously heard referred to as a Tallahassee Sustainability Action Agenda. The new name is the Green Print. And also, we discussed the REACH program and possible ways to save money as we move forward with that, with the next stage of that program. On the Green Print, as you know, that recommends initiatives to create a more livable and sustainable government and community. The EPER has partitioned the larger Green Print Plan into, they had always, they had always designated certain action items as being short-term, intermediate, and long-term, and what they, but it was kind of a volume of, of action items to be trying to deal with all at one time. We've been challenged with that, and so, they went back to the drawing board in April and then came up with another revised draft, which I think a couple of you have seen. But at this point, they feel that the best course of action is to segment out all of the, what they call short-term action items, and bring only those forward for review by the commission at this point, meaning in approximately, should come back, their 80 short-term items. Only three of those have currently been identified as needing policy direction from the City Commission. They intend, EPER depends, intends to develop those, this plan and bring it to ENE in September, and then bring it to the commission in either late September or early October.
Okay. And the REACH program.
Yeah, a quick question. I don't know if I heard you, but how many different action items?
Eighty.
Eighty, of which only three come before us?
Well, no. All, the whole package will come before you. They've only identified three items. Now, granted, we were distributed materials at the meeting that had this new plan.
Yeah.
And so, I haven't really had a chance, other than at the meeting, you know, to look at this over and determine whether I agree with that, but that's where it is, and that's why I'm, that's what they've identified as needing policy direction.
And actually, yesterday, you talked about setting a special workshop to that, to talk about that.
That's right. REACH, which all of us have basked in the glow on various occasions of the REACH program. The contract with Honeywell to do this program is about to expire, it'll expire this summer. And Energy Services has been, over the past month or so, exploring other alternative methods for implementing the program in order to, because there may be ways to implement the program now that it's up and running, that we could do it at a reduced cost per unit. The leading alternative involves contracting out field staff support while managing the other program elements in-house by city staff. Right now, our staff, under the guidance of Rick Fernandez, is, and I believe David Byrne and Reese Code, as you know, I, those are the twins, as far as I know. I never quite understand whose job stops and when they start, but they're, everyone's on board to work out a scope of work for the current field team, which is currently staffed by a company called Earth Steps, and is, how they're going to continue operations for the upcoming year, if, what that would look like. Cost alternatives will be refined once the scope of work is fully developed, and I said before, the intent is to reduce the per-unit cost of operating the program. This topic will be discussed again at the September ENE meeting, and then this will come to you as a commission shortly thereafter.
I agree with everything the Commissioner said, very well. Next item.
We, Mr. Mayor, we've exhausted the agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a point earlier on the UPHS situation. I had gotten a note that there was some confusion over whether the unofficial seat was going to be a UPA, UPHS person. I wanted to clarify that it wasn't the director, but it would be a UPHS agency, if that, if everyone was clear on that part.
Right, and then non-voting.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, just want to make sure, Michael, then.
So, it'll be, is it going to be somebody from that organization?
Right, from the...
Thank you.
Got to wait six o'clock?
That's good.
Got to wait until six o'clock?
We could do un-agenda speakers, or we could do commission updates or sharing of ideas, if you'd like to do that now.
Let's go to un-agenda speakers. Any un-agenda speakers?
We have a couple, Mayor, Curtis Baines.
Mr. Baines.
And also Dr. Erwin Jackson, I don't know if he's outside at this time or not.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge your efforts the other day at your workshop of regarding the millage rate for next year. I think you had voted to hold it at 3.7, if I'm not mistaken. And I see there's still five of you there, so I presume it wasn't very contentious in trying to get to that point, but I do, I did want to take a moment to acknowledge that, and thank you for your efforts in trying to keep that under control. I know I still owe you a letter on, on special appropriations that I asked you about last, last meeting. I haven't forgotten about it, and I hope to get that to you soon. And during your break, I hope we can take, I hope, take a little more, a little closer look at the budget that you're suggesting. There are a couple of, there's still a couple of other issues that are going to, that are out there. You'd mentioned the Green Print issue, I've not had a chance to take a look at that, I know, 80, 80 action items, you know, I multiply it times $10,000, and I think that's around $800,000 in cost, but, you know, I'm sure the numbers are going to have to be worked out at some point, but I'm just trying to get a feel for what that's going to cost us down the road. The other thing is, and I, and I thought we've been looking for that in the last few months, has to do with what it's going to cost us on Star Metro to get us to the point where you're trying to get to in terms of that. I thought it was going to be out today, I did, I was looking through everything, it had transit in it, I didn't see it, I don't know where that is, or if that's forthcoming soon. So, I know that that is going to be a potential issue in future budgets, if it's not already in this one. And then, I think we're probably going to need to start taking a little closer look at, at, at some of our policies we touched upon, I don't want to belabor the point about the, the risk that you take when you underwrite loans, or you guarantee loans, or you get into the land development business, or you, you know, provide loans and guarantees, those things, I know there's a lot of exposure out there already, I don't know what all that is, and at some point, that's going to, you know, come to, to, you know, either possibly a positive outcome, which we all hope, or as the economy worsens or stagnates further, the potential that we're going to have a repeat of the issue that we just went through. And in the meantime, I would like to wish you the good break, and hope you have a safe break, enjoy yourself, and get, and get refreshed, because there are a lot of things that I think we need to do when we get back. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson, and that's the only other speaker we have at this time.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Couple of weeks ago, we had a fairly lively discussion on ethics issues, and after that meeting, I had a young lady, she works for the Florida Department of Transportation, called me up and said, "Mr. Jackson, I don't understand the problem." She said, "We at the Department of Transportation have our own ethics ordinance, which is much stronger than Section 112." And it says simply that the ordinance is the purpose, that you maximize honesty, ethical conduct, and openness in government decision-making. I think we all agree on that. She goes on to say that no employee can accept any benefit from any contractor for DOT or city contractor. Hey, I think we all agree on that. And then, finally, this is so, so simple, it says that a DOT employee will not, shall not, not may, or at their option, but shall not enter into a business agreement with any contractor or anyone seeking a contract with DOT. No business agreement. Secondly, you, as an employee of DOT, cannot enter into a financial agreement, okay? You can't do business with them, you can't borrow money from them, and third, shall not enter into a social relationship. Now, I don't know the definition, that's a new one he threw on me. The first two, I could really, I think it is easy to understand. Don't enter into business, and don't borrow money from them or give them money. I think we can all agree on that, that's very simple, and we can eliminate so many of these conversations, and I promise you, I'm not going to come back up here and talk after we get us a ethics ordinance. But DOT came up with an ethics ordinance for their employees, and if thousands of DOT employees statewide can understand not to enter into a business or financial relationship with their contractors, I'm certain city employees, and especially city commissioners will be able to follow that same logic. And I look forward to talking in more detail about this ethics ordinance. Thank you so much.
Any more speakers?
That's the last speaker.
All right. Then I guess we're...
On break until...
On break until six o'clock, when we have some public hearings. We'll have some public hearings.
Recession, I think it's the city attorney.
We're on public hearings.
Public hearings.
Thank you. We do in fact have four public hearings this evening. First item 16.01 is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Evening Rose PUD.
Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Property moved in second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602 is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item. Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Next item, item 1603 is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 12Z17. It's amendments to the official zoning map from single-family detached residential RP and urban fringe to open space and here for public hearing.
No speakers on this item. Move acceptance.
Second.
Property moved in second. All in favor of that aye. Motion say aye.
Aye.
And the final public hearing this evening is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting on ordinance 12Z22. This is amendments to the official zoning map from urban 26 to central urban 45, property you're familiar with on Monroe Street. Since that time, there've been a series of discussions with planning staff coordinating the issue, looking for a device, if you will, as you discussed at your last meeting to try to accommodate the needs of the property owner as well as the neighborhood. I think everybody believes they've come up with a good plan, and that is to initiate a urban PUD on the property. It does qualify apparently for the urban PUD. That process allows you to apply some of the restrictions that have been discussed between the parties to accommodate the needs. So what we would recommend this evening is that you close this public hearing. We'll continue this. Don't take a vote on it. We just want you to close the hearing and continue it till September the 19th. In the interim, the urban PUD process will be initiated, and the plan is for that to come back to you that same evening. So you'll also have a hearing on that, that evening, and if everything has worked out, what you do is frankly defeat this rezoning and approve that UPUD.
All right.
Mr. Snyder can answer any questions? Obviously, we have...
No, I saw a lot of his, this side and this side, doing this nodding saying that we've got, there they go again. You know, so it looks like we've got some, we're going to continue this matter until September 18.
Close the public hearing and continue it.
We did have one speaker.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Vivian.
That's okay. Nobody wants to speak. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner...
I think he does.
Somebody wants to speak?
Yes.
Give us your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Robert Olmsted, 1412 South Meridian Street. I'm the president of Myers Park Neighborhood Association, and basically what we just want to do is get up and speak in support of this UPUD, and to thank city staff and the planning department there for their efforts. Thank Mr. Weddington for working with us here on this issue, and I think we've arrived at a good, fair compromise that will allow him to do business and at the same time protect Myers Park Neighborhood, and that's the goal here, is what we're here to do is to protect our neighborhood from incompatible development, and Mr. Weddington seems to be on the same page with us. We don't want to stop his business, so I won't speak for him, but I just want to thank all the people involved for the cooperative spirit that has developed in this, resulting in this UPUD decision there. Thank you.
That's what we like. Mr. Weddington, would you just nod your head like that? That means he agrees, okay? All right, Mr. Weddington is in the audience for the basis, and he is agreeing with what was just said by the president of the...
Myers Park.
Myers Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you all, really. Thank you all for working together. This is the kind of cooperative spirit we like. We've done this before, and it has worked out, and you all just proved that it can work and work. So thank you again. Okay? Commissioner Gillum has something to add.
No, I was just going to echo sincere appreciation. You're sitting up here, you kind of get a sense when people have good intentions, and when you all spoke, you had great intentions for neighborhood preservation, and when the applicant spoke and his representatives, they also had good intent from what we could hear, and it's just satisfying to see that when people of good intention get together, that good things can result. So thank you for your willingness to do it.
I wanted to offer, it's actually a very good lesson for anybody that is watching this or in the future, that when you have two different groups that have a desire for resolution, usually you can come to terms. And so recently, we've had at least one example where that wasn't the case, and it didn't turn out well for one of the parties. So I congratulate both of you for showing a desire, and I congratulate our staff because clearly there's a desire on three sides. So thank you.
Okay. Somebody else wanted to say something. We don't share enough ideas, I think.
Move approval?
Move approval of...
Do we already...
No, we're just going to defer.
Oh, it's a continuation, I'm sorry.
And...
It's closed.
Continued it to September 19.
September 16.
Okay. Some, oh, tell us the good news.
Mayor, this afternoon, we got word from Standard and Poor's as part of a ratings review of our electric and gas utility, what we term the energy system. They have affirmed the double rate, double A rating that they have afforded to us. It is a stable rating as well. They recognize that we have a dependence on gas-fired generation that has some challenges, but that our strong financial metrics like our debt service coverage, stable service area economy anchored by our government and university customers, as well as just overall good management practices when folks like this city commission make appropriate adjustments to rates and fuel charges and manage the transfers in a manner that is practical and follows a policy. Those positives keep us in a double A rating.
That is great. That is good. That is wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank the electric utility department. That's where the things goes, because, yeah, they do a great job, and give us that rating.
Best in the nation.
Best in the nation. That's why we got a double A rating. Thank you. I think we stand, unless there's something...
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go back and revisit a policy item from earlier, 13.01. I wanted to clarify that I didn't intend for the motion to exclude the staff person of the United Partners for Human Services, executive director for United Partners for Human Services from serving, that I think that they should be able to be considered for service in that seventh non-voting seat, not excluded from consideration, but that individual will still be decided by the three partners, the three funding partners, the city, county, and the United Way. Is that...
Is the person from, from among the qualified agencies not just from that one?
Right.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Second item, item 1602, is the second of two public hearings on an extension of the Chapter 163 Development Agreement for the Governor's Park Corners property.
No speakers on this item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item.
Next item, item 1603, is the second and final public hearing on ordinance 12Z17. It's amendments to the official zoning map from single-family detached residential RP and urban fringe to open space. And here for public hearing.
No speakers on this item.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Property moved and second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the final public hearing this evening is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting on ordinance 12Z22. This is amendments to the official zoning map from urban 26 to central urban 45, the property you're familiar with on Monroe Street. Since that time, there've been a series of discussions with planning staff coordinating the issue, looking for a device, if you will, as you discussed at your last meeting, to try to accommodate the needs of the property owner as well as the neighborhood. I think everybody believes they've come up with a good plan, and that is to initiate a urban PUD on the property. It does qualify apparently for the urban PUD. That process allows you to apply some of the restrictions that have been discussed between the parties to accommodate the needs. So what we would recommend this evening is that you close this public hearing. We'll continue this. Don't take a vote on it. We just want you to close the hearing and continue it till September the 19th. In the interim, the urban PUD process will be initiated, and the plan is for that to come back to you that same evening. So you'll also have a hearing on that, that evening. And if everything has worked out, what you do is frankly defeat this rezoning and approve that UPUD.
All right.
Mr. Snyder can answer any questions? Obviously, we have...
No, I saw a lot of his on this side and this side, doing this, nodding, saying that we've got... There they go again. You know. So it looks like we've got some... We're going to continue this matter until September 18?
Close the public hearing and continue it.
We did have one speaker.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Vivian?
That's okay. Nobody wants to speak. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner?
I think he does.
I think he did want to speak.
Somebody wants to speak?
Yes.
Give us your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Robert Olmsted, 1412 South Meridian Street. I'm the president of Myers Park Neighborhood Association. And basically, what we just want to do is get up and speak in support of this UPUD, and to thank city staff and the planning department there for their efforts. Thank Mr. Weddington for working with us here on this issue. And I think we've arrived at a good, fair compromise that will allow him to do business and at the same time protect Myers Park Neighborhood. And that's the goal here, is what we're here to do is to protect our neighborhood from incompatible development. And Mr. Weddington seems to be on the same page with us. We don't want to stop his business. So I won't speak for him, but I just want to thank all the people involved for the cooperative spirit that has developed in this, resulting in this UPUD decision there. Thank you.
That's what we like. Mr. Weddington, would you just nod your head like that? That means he agrees, okay? All right. Mr. Weddington is in the audience for the basis, and he is agreeing with what was just said by the president of the...
Myers Park.
Myers Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you all, really. Thank you all for working together. This is the kind of cooperative spirit we like. We've done this before, and it has worked out, and you all just proved that it can work and work. So thank you again. Okay? Commissioner Gillum has something.
No, I was just going to echo sincere appreciation. You're sitting up here, you kind of get a sense when people have good intentions. And when you all spoke, you had great intentions for neighborhood preservation. And when the applicant spoke and his representatives, they also had good intent, from what we could hear. And it's just satisfying to see that when people of good intention get together, that good things can result. So thank you for your willingness to do it.
I wanted to offer, it's actually a very good lesson for anybody that is watching this or in the future, that when you have two different groups that have a desire for resolution, usually you can come to terms. And so recently, we've had at least one example where that wasn't the case, and it didn't turn out well for one of the parties. So I congratulate both of you for showing a desire, and I congratulate our staff, because clearly, there's a desire on three sides. So thank you.
Okay. Somebody else wanted to say something. We don't share any of ideas, I think.
Move approval?
Move approval of...
Do we already...
Oh, we're just going to defer.
Oh, it's a continuation. I'm sorry.
It's closed.
Continued it to September 19.
September 16.
Okay. Some... Oh. Tell us the good news.
Mayor, this afternoon, we got word from Standard and Poor's as part of a ratings review of our electric and gas utility, what we term the energy system. They have affirmed the double A rating that they have afforded to us. It is a stable rating as well. They recognize that we have a dependence on gas-fired generation that has some challenges, but that our strong financial metrics, like our debt service coverage, stable service area economy anchored by our government and university customers, as well as just overall good management practices when folks like this city commission make appropriate adjustments to rates and fuel charges and manage the transfers in a manner that is practical and follows the policy. Those positives keep us in a double A rating.
That is great. That is good. That is wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank the Electric Utility Department. That's where the things goes, because, yeah, they do a great job and give us that rating.
Best in the nation.
Best in the nation. That's why we got a double A rating. Thank you. I think we stand... Unless there's something... Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go back and revisit a policy item from earlier, 13.01. I wanted to clarify that I didn't intend for the motion to exclude the staff person of the United Partners for Human Services Executive Director for United Partners for Human Services from serving. That I think that they should be able to be considered for service in that seventh non-voting seat, not excluded from consideration. But that individual will still be decided by the three partners, the three funding partners, the city, county, and the United Way. Is that...
Is the person from among the qualified agencies, not just from that one?
Right. It will include folks from the qualified agencies, as well as executive director can be under consideration for that.
That's just one of the possible potentials.
As a potential. Not... We're not naming that person to the seventh seat.
Okay. Commissioner? Just one, and it's from an email I think the city manager forwarded earlier today, having to do with Atlantic Cities Place Matters. The city of Tallahassee, the numbers aren't in this, but I was told this, has to do with America's leading creative class metros. Five years ago, we were like number 90, and three years ago, we were, I think, 40 or 50, and now we're number 11.
Wow.
And it's a fascinating article, and we stand ahead of some pretty substantial creative class cities like New York and places like that. And I would suspect if we keep going the way we are, we'll be probably top five in a year or so, so...
Is that in Atlantic Monthly, you said?
It's Atlantic Cities Place Matters.
Okay. Well...
Just to follow up on that, I wanted to point out that we were ahead of our sister city down in the middle of the state where that other team comes from. And we were also ahead of Madison, Wisconsin. And those are two places that I thought I've always used as examples, and yet, here we are, ranked ahead. So I was very proud of that.
We are doing some wonderful things, as all of us have said over the years, that this city is a really great city, and we're doing some good things. And it's attested to by these kinds of acknowledgements. So let's continue it. But right now, I want